Just state your name and address.
Thank you. Hello, I'm Sarah Stone, 69 Pleasant Street, Manchester. Good evening, everybody. I am here tonight to make a final request to you, our representatives on the school committee, to vote in support of a level services budget. I trust that in times of such uncertainty, you will help our community feel confident about the direction we, as a community, are going when it comes to fostering and investing in our school system. I implore you to help our residents understand the crossroads our public schools find themselves at and the repercussions of not financially supporting the needs of our children. I challenge each member of this committee to inform Manchester and Essex residents about the extraordinary collaborative and selfless work that is the education of a child. Your job as our elected school committee is to proudly scream from the rooftops about all of the hard work, perseverance, and dedication our teachers give with day in and day out, as proven by all of the previous graduates of our district and their successes. Our community is relying on each of you to clearly communicate why we must find the funding for a middle school principal and why it is imperative that we stop asking our school leadership to make cuts to essential personnel, curricular programs, and materials. Tonight is just the beginning. Tomorrow is when the real work begins. I promise you that I will do my part. As a parent, I will continue to talk to my neighbors, those with children in the schools and those without, about the long-term investment that is a public education, the least risky investment we as a community could make. None of us can do this alone, and I trust and believe we can and we'll do it together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sarah Davis, 11 Highland Avenue. I walked away from having attended the last school committee meeting pretty disheartened by the challenges faced this year, the lack of consensus toward a level services budget, and the time spent to prepare for tonight's votes and ultimately annual town meetings. I commend everyone for drilling down on the details. There was discussion of specific costs and broader financial models, data points, community feedback, and myriad of other important inputs. But what stuck with me most were the remarks of our student representative, Stella Strab, a graduating senior, which she shared. And I did not preview that I would be quoting you and my remarks, sorry. I'm condensing your remarks here, but I think this was one of the most important things said at that meeting. She described it as a senior, she thinks about what the school looks like after graduation and how much the school has given to her, noting that if you attend these amazing meetings, it's easy to see how much the school requires. And if you're not in the school as a student or a teacher, it's hard to see all that the school gives and provides, including the amazing work that goes on every single day. Ahead of graduating this year, she shared that this will be the absolute greatest gift a person can ever receive. What a testament to the school district. This is why we are all here. She went on to share, obviously, students benefit from the school and everyone's time, energy, and money, but there's a sense of responsibility that's built after you graduate to give back to people who provided you so much when you were a student. That's why people go back to their hometowns and raise their kids where they were raised. She ended with, "I worry about that relationship eroding, that symbiotic relationship between the school and the community if we can go down the line and start making cuts and not providing level services. I worry about the long-term impact of that." It's a reminder that what is being voted on in this room tonight by the seven of you is more than just the fiscal year 2026 budget. The outcome will shape years to come when it is near certainty that we will face even more challenges. I encourage you to vote a level services budget, and after that, educate residents about the cost behind the need to increase revenue, work with the town incomes and select boards, and put on a full court press for support at the annual town meetings in May. It's not the easy path, but it's the right one. You have many people in this room and online who support that effort.
Is there anyone online? Yep. I think I...
I do not see any names.
Okay.
No, just comments.
Robbie Hillsberry, 126 Eastern Avenue, Essex Math, the Moultrie Teacher here in the district. I again want to just thank all the hard work that you guys have been doing. I just want to make a plea. This is a little bit different. Obviously, I can talk about a lot of different things. I'm in favor of a, you know, a full budget, you know, kind of moving forward with that. But it's also what I'd like to do now is just a little bit of a plea, you know, to the Essex Finance Committee. There is citizens of Essex, you know, and all the different, you know, places and envelopes that Essex has money. To my understanding, I believe there's a budget surplus of $9.8 million, and I would love to see some of that stretched towards supporting a school that does absolutely amazing things. And all we are asking for, and I, you know, all will come down to what you finally decide to put forward as a budget, is basically maintaining of the things we have now. We're not looking for extra stuff. We're just looking to give our students what all of us were given is just, you know, a full, robust program. And I feel like if we can use some of that $9.8 million and that can get stretched, I have paid for that as a citizen of Essex. I know that that is my tax money, and it is sitting, you know, in surplus. And if any of that could be used, I'm just making up the Essex Finance Committee to try and use some of that in this process. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'll go first, but for the first time ever, Brian Gressler, 30 Cho Street. So I support the level services budget. I would vote for an override as an Essex resident. I do think that based on my understanding of where Essex is planning this and things like that, that they were going to, the last I saw and not decided yet, were going to put the whole of the school budget into an override and could just get the rest of their municipal budget under an override. So what that really means, though, is that the 100% of your capacity limit for the year is going to half your budget. So they are having a correction on the municipal budget in the same way that this override is having a correction on the school. The town needs that correction. And when we vote for this override and when we talk about it and when we sell it, it is that whole picture, right? That this is not a 1% year-over-year municipal budget increase. This is a substantially more increase to get over years and years of starting the town and years and years of starting the school, and they both go together, and it's about time. Thank you.
I'm Lindsay Banks. I'm at 40 Forest Street. I wanted to thank the school committee for your hard work navigating through a tough budget year. I also want to thank the teachers who have taken the time to advocate for our kids and be clear about what is at stake for teaching and learning. As I've made clear, I support and would vote for a budget that retains the principle. I'm not going to go into why, in the interest of brevity, I have a lot more to say. I also don't think it's necessary or wise to cut a facilities manager as we need to ensure we're caring for the buildings we're investing in. And given that a new or renovated EBS is in the pipeline, this touch doesn't make sense to me. I wanted to directly address some of the points made by those who are calling for a completely unreasonable 2.5%, sometimes as low as 1% budget growth for our schools. These growth rates are unreasonable to requests of any school district given inflation, cost of living, personnel costs, and the current health insurance market. We've been fortunate that the district has been able to keep average budget growth under a very reasonable 3.5% these past five years. We have had very extenuating circumstances that health insurance numbers are so high, exacerbating our budget situation. Given those healthcare increases, and especially this year, this is calling for 2.5% budget growth is unreasonable. It is unreasonable to call for 10 to 13 additional cuts, quote, "like Rockford", when we have already cut 15 positions over the past five years, mainly through attrition. It is unreasonable to demand that the district address inequities, but then demand a budget that would result in cuts to services that would address those very inequities. It is unreasonable to claim that the district has not been transparent when in fact, the very information demanded has been shared repeatedly in public meetings. I will say it louder and slower. Costs are rising, even though enrollment is dropping because we have more children that need more special education services that they are entitled to by law. This requires more staff and more transportation, and we have a responsibility to give every child what they need to learn successfully. It is unreasonable to claim that households who don't use the schools don't benefit from them. The towns of Manchester and Essex both benefit from having high-quality schools because first and foremost, the young people in our towns are able to thrive. Even if you don't have a kid in schools, that's a win, if you care about your community. We could also make it about home values. All of us benefit because the value of property in our towns goes up when the schools are high quality. It is unreasonable to continue to demand an additional audit. Our schools are already audited yearly and ask taxpayers to fund it when there is no scope of work or proposed plan. Public schools are not businesses because they are not run for profit. They are run so our kids can thrive. Schools don't answer to shareholders or finance committee chairs. They answer to their stakeholders, town residents, parents, teachers, and ultimately to the children they are meant to serve. It is unreasonable and disingenuous to call for partnership between our towns as a way to argue against a super town meeting, then refuse to even be open to having a conversation. Our regional partnership requires us to continue to collaborate and talk with each other, even if we disagree. It is increasingly clear that, for the purposes of transparency, conversations between our town leaders must take place in open meetings. It is unreasonable to go for an override and isolate the schools in that override rather than planning an override that includes other town services, which Essex so desperately needs, given that one has not been passed there in 20 years and all Essex Town Department budgets are starving. It is this decision that will likely force a super town meeting, not a lack of consideration or partnership between our towns. And after it does pass special town meeting, super town meeting, what's the strategy then? These unreasonable demands and claims have served to distract our school committee from its task at hand, to be a vigorous ambassador for public education before all citizens and pass a budget that reflects that charge. I ask that you do that tonight by passing a level services budget. Thank you.
I'm George Langmore, 30 East Street. I don't think I have as much understanding of the situation here that someone close to that story. And four kids in public schools here. Story has just been... You know, three years ago, we moved here from, you know, California, and we could have moved just about anywhere. We chose this specific town. That was in large part to the school that we're standing, Masco over there and the Essex schools. And so I just, obviously, it wasn't just the school, but what the schools represent, what the Turk represents. What we see here, what we saw when we looked at where everyone's living was, it can be that. It's supposed to succeed, to execute projects, pass budgets, to build new schools, work together. And so that choice has been borne out and seems successful and compromised again and again the past three, three years since we've lived here. The new folks on the school committee are right at the vanguard of that effort, making these at the school, work together in a way that creates great schools. I believe that's not just people with kids in the school, but everything in the town in terms of property value, in terms of viability. So I just want to thank you for all the hard work that you've been doing, for the support for the full budget.
And we'll look to switch online. It looks like Betsy, you'd like to make a public comment?
Hi, guys. Yeah, I apologize. It took me a second to unmute. Hi, everyone. That's Amy McKean, 35 Left Hand Point Road in Essex. Thank you, school committee members. You know we're so grateful for you. The amount of work you put into your job is so meaningful and so appreciated. I am going to be super brief, and I didn't, this is a little bit off the cuff. I just want to put it out there. Many people who know me know that I fully support a level services budget. I would vote for an override. I have talked to many, many, many of my neighbors and co-residents in Essex and Manchester, but especially, I can speak to Essex. People will pass an override. But, you know, I think as school committee members, your job, as has been stated, is to think about the students and to think about your stakeholders. I ask you to pass a level services budget. Essex can sort ourselves out. I mean, I hope we can sort ourselves out. We're trying really hard. A lot of us are advocating for a different strategy than what's been used to fund the town and the schools in the past. As Brian and Lindsay both alluded to, there has been an interesting strategy of pushing all of the override costs onto the schools, which is perceived by some town members as being able to be isolated and said no to, which is not fair. I refuse to sit by while the cost of the school is isolated and put off by itself while the town pretends that they can stay under 2.5% while riding on the coattails of the school override. That's just like not acceptable. So again, as school committee members, not your purview. I see you all being super collaborative. I appreciate the fact that you are working with the town finance committees and the town leadership, but ultimately, it's, as you know, the students and the stakeholders. I mean, ultimately, just the students that matter the most. So please pass a level funded, a level services budget tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Wolf, Porzog, in Skriper, Essex. Like the fellow on C Street, we moved here when we were looking for great public schools. Both kids got a great education. I don't have any kids left in the school, but I feel we have a responsibility to continue to make them great for the next generation. So I want the four young kids to have every opportunity in life to do. Please keep that.
I'm Erin Reed, 27 Norwood in Manchester. Wanted to just speak with two hats. One, as an adjustment counselor in a different district, and one as a mom. I'll speak freely with my mental health hat on. But district where I work has a, and I've been speaking specifically toward the keeping the principle for the middle school. We do not have that model in my district, and I see how it... It's not that it doesn't work. It can work. But as we know, the developmental needs of sixth, seventh, and eighth graders are precarious. They're tricky. They're specific. My mom hat goes on now. When, we all know it takes a village to raise our kids. Last year, when I went to the middle, or the meeting for middle school parents, it was so apparent how passionate Joanne was about, "This is our model. We are so lucky to have a middle school model, a true middle school model." And I was elated to hear that passion in her voice. My son is in sixth grade. He and a couple of his pals were... There was an incident in the community that he was involved in, and it had nothing to do with the school. But when we brought it to the school, not for the school to fix it, but just, hey, just want you to know, if you hear something, this is what happened. Jo Janak and Joanne jumped in and didn't have to at all. Not to fix it, but just to, in the year, to show support, to show that village, to create that village. And it meant the world to my family, my son, his friends, and everyone else to know that this village was here. So I just want to put a plug in to keep that middle school position of a principal. Thank you. Thank you for all of your hard work.
And Katie, why don't we go online and go ahead? Katie Van Veen, if you'd like to make a couple of comments, please come off mute and please do so. Maybe we'll come back.
My name is Jessica Pino at 303 Summer Street here in Manchester. An even newer, since last year. My family just moved here at the end of August, and we're currently renting and in the highly unenviable position of looking for a home in Manchester right now. And the juxtaposition of the limited inventory, the incredibly inflated prices of real estate, the juxtaposition of that with hearing the schools... We came from Concord, Massachusetts. And it never occurred to me that the school would not be funded, would be missing such key things as librarians, principals. To be honest, any town needs new families, new young families to thrive. I'm a mother of three children, 10, 8, and 4 years old. We love it here. We'd love to stay here. But given the lack of inventory, the high prices, and then hearing about these really essential pieces and roles that are missing in these schools, it's giving us pause, to be honest. Do we want to make this investment? Do you want young families like mine to come to Manchester, to keep the town thriving, to keep the schools thriving? And for that, you absolutely need to pass a level services budget.
Okay, Katie, if you can hear us.
Yes, can you hear, can you hear me now? I apologize.
We can, yep.
Thank you. My technology freaked out on my end, so thank you. I have, I have written some letters in the past and spoke publicly before. And one thing that I do become concerned about is, obviously, we know that the schools need some more financial backing. That's the truth. It seems as though whatever budget we pass tonight, it still seems like that's not enough. However, on the other side of this, if we continue to have override after override after override and the budget year after year after year continues to increase, and our taxes then continue to increase. I know everyone here cares about, I have two kids in the, in the school system, one in seventh and one in fourth. I want a great education for them too, but I also want to be able to continue to live here. And I think that's a concern for a number of people in town. There has got to be a way to meet in the middle, and I really hope that conversation continues between people in town, people in elected positions, and with the citizens. I know Manchester and Essex tend to be a little bit more on the more affluent side of things. However, there are folks in town that, you know, it's hard to pay your taxes, that continuing to live in Essex after having contributed to the school system for decades, put their own kids through only to be able to say, "Well, I can't live here now." You know, that's, that's not right either. It's not right to not give our kids a good education. You can see both sides of this story. However, I really hope and I encourage to have more, however it is you decide to vote tonight, I hope that the conversation continues in a very public and transparent way, offering continued comment from the public. And perhaps there's a way that everyone, including the citizens, can get together and put their, put their heads together for something that is a path in the middle that makes it so people can still afford to live here because we care about our kids now, and override after override will certainly benefit them now. But who does that benefit in the future? Who gets to move here and live here and benefit from that? And that's something I hope that we can continue to offer to middle-class and even lower-income families in the future because at some point, it's not going to be sustainable for many. So I'll leave you with that, and thank you for hearing me tonight.
Can we have anyone else in person?
Hi, I'm Catherine Tennessey, 21 Hare Street in Manchester. I have four kids who all started in the integrated preschool, and one is in college, and she wants to be a librarian, so give it a couple of years. We have a senior, a junior, and an eighth grader. I support the full budget in any way, shape, and form. I think what we need to do first and foremost is support our teachers and educate our children. Thank you to school board. You guys did a great job. Thank you, Erica, for always engaging my many emails.
Elle, I see that you're in the chat. Would you like to make a comment?
I would. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
I'll start off by saying I firmly support passing a level budget. That sort of goes without saying. I wanted to comment on an experience that I had this year that I think is really important as it pertains to the middle school principal. I have a son in second grade at Essex Elementary. I have a daughter in her first year at the middle school in sixth grade, and she came into sixth grade with 504. I was shocked by how unbelievably proactive the principal was in setting up the 504 meeting and having every single teacher on that call, on all of them, like bringing observations about my kid. I was really afraid that she was going to get lost in the shuffle, right? Moving into, you know, a bigger school, a different population. And they have been unbelievable. And I really, really worry about what happens if that middle school principal isn't there. I think it's a lot to ask a single individual to be dealing with all of these specific situations with kids. I think the kids in middle school really deserve that, that principal and that advocate to be there. So that's a big thing for me in these cuts, potential cuts. That one just feels like a bridge too far. But generally speaking, you know, I'll say what I say every time I, you know, get up and talk about this stuff. We moved here in large part because of the school system. And, you know, to see it potentially, the value of it get whittled away, you know, we could have just stayed in East Boston. And it's, it's really, I also see both sides of it, to Katie's point. I also have seen my taxes increase by a large margin since we've lived here. But I think there's a lot of families like mine that came here for the schools. And so if we continue to chip away and deteriorate the value of the education that we provide, what is there, what, what reason is there to move here? Particularly because it is an expensive place to live. So I thank you to the school committee. I know this has been just a, you know, a marathon for you. But I'll just say, I, I know I speak for a lot of other moms and dads in town when I say we support a level budget and giving our kids the education that we moved here to get them. The end.
Is there anyone else in person that would like to make a comment? All right. So thank you very much, everyone.
I'll leave you with that, Mark.
Oh, sorry.
Hi, I'm Kevin Louiezo. I live at 20th Ever Street here in Manchester. And I just want to make a point. I'm speaking on behalf of our kids. We're up for integrated preschool. My son has come up through the system here in Manchester. Some kindergarten, missing one year, that we had in Middleton. That year, there was not a principal. There was a substitute principal at that school, and he had an extremely difficult, bad experience. I just want to say, on behalf of the kids, having a principal is helping with security and support and structure. And it's a much bigger picture than I think most adults will even really consider. Because, you know, when you're a kid, you're going to school, you want that person that you can go to at the end of the day if you need help. And not just academic help, but like the bigger picture. You know, bullying, support, the 504s, all of that. And it's ridiculous to think that one person can be a principal for both these forms. So I just wanted to say, if we have our kids, please vote for keeping that position and the funded override.
Brendan, if you'd like to make a comment?
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
We can, yep.
Thank you. Yes, so there was a comment made, I just want to provide it for public information, that the town of Essex has, I guess the quoted figure is $9.8 million in reserves. We do have many different types of reserve funds that are put aside for specific purposes. But generally, we have a stabilization fund with about $1 million in it. And we have a, we had free cash certified at around $1.2 million. And there are other funds, like money that we got when we sold property at Kenmore Point that can't be used for things like this. We have specific funds for specific other purposes that can't be spent on this. So when you do add everything up, I believe it comes to somewhere around seven something, 7 million something. But again, it's, it's not proper to say that all of those funds can be spent on operations, whether that's the school or the, or the municipal budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I'm Brian Parker, 35 Vine Street, Manchester. My family is also one of the families that moved here recently, last year. We have three kids, second grade, kindergarten, and preschool. And I hope that we pass a level services budget. I totally read all the comments about the principal. I think sometimes you say something enough, you become numb to it, you know, almost like, well, it's actually a thing getting rid of a middle school principal. It's hard to believe. I just want to speak to elimination of the head of facilities. I own and operate a decent-sized manufacturing facility while moving here. And everybody that operates in heavy industry or operates in big physical plant like this knows that anybody in maintenance or the head of facilities, whatever you're paying them, you're going to get it back because they're protecting your assets. Unless we had two people doing the same job, I'd have a hard time trying to understand how we're going to eliminate that position and make sure that tens of millions of dollars with schools and assets that we have here are going to be taken care of. Used to build buildings and they've lasted for a hundred years. And now we see some schools being built forty years later. They're being torn down. And I want to make sure that doesn't happen. Thank you.
Anyone else? Want to make any comments?
Can I clarify my?
Sure.
I didn't say level services, level budget. I didn't support the level budget. That was like totally insubordinate.
All right. Thank you very much, everyone, for your comments tonight. We do appreciate it. Moving on, especially in the essence of time, I don't have a shared business report tonight. So we'll move on to our student report.
I mean, I was pretty much able to say everything I wanted to say at our last meeting. But I guess I'll, again, voice many people here, student support for a level services budget. As a graduating senior, I would hope that all the kids who are coming up to grade levels now would have all the opportunities that me and pastors who have graduated have had access to. I would really hope for that. And I mean, obviously, I'm not a taxpayer and I'm not really a contributing member of society at the current. So I understand that like a 2.3% or a 5.4% budget might look like a win this year or like today. But I think it kind of looks like downhill and failure in the long term because we're slow. It's like a slow erosion at our schools. So it's hard to see, but it's there. And I know, again, not a taxpayer, but I know a level services budget looks tough now. But I think anybody looking in the future and at the long term would say that that's the direction we should go in because it sets us up for future success. But yeah.
Thank you. So moving on to our consent agenda, I'd like to make a motion for the acceptance of vouchers 1056 through 1057.
Yeah, I'll do that.
Second. All right. Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous. And then, secondly, a motion to accept the minutes from March 2025.
Seven.
Second. Thank you. All those in favor? I'm in the east of staying. Okay, great. Thank you.
Who's abstaining?
I am. I, I'll bring it up another time. I can't read the mic.
And then, thirdly, I'd like to accept a motion to accept the 2025-2026 district calendar.
Seven.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Any final discussion on the calendar?
I'll just say for anybody tuning in for the first time, we discussed this in our last meeting, but we didn't have it on the agenda, so we could not take a formal word on it. You can watch that meeting on YouTube.
All right, thank you. All those in favor? All those in favor? Thank you. Moving on to our subcommittee ones. First, we go to the elementary facilities.
So we have not met since our last meeting. We have our first meeting with the owner project manager coming up next week, which is exciting. And obviously, on the continued business tonight, we will take a vote to appropriate the money for our portion of the stabilization, excuse me, our portion of the feasibility study. We haven't met, so is there anything more you guys wanted to add?
No, just welcome everybody to tune in to those or come to those meetings. Those are all public meetings. They're going to brief us on the timeline and next steps, including, I think, a preview of the RFS for designer services in hopes that we can keep that process moving. So we're entering into exciting times with, like, hopefully, an all-community meeting before the end of this year. And certainly, community meetings in the fall to seek input and start to generate ideas and develop concepts for renovation or rebuild of the Essex Elementary School. So exciting.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And then the finance committee.
I can report out?
Yeah.
And it makes sense to do this here rather than at the budget because this is more like contextual rather than specific to our conversation, although it definitely will inform our conversation. But so we met as part of the quote-unquote "number crunching group" recently, where the main purpose was to hear from the towns in terms of their current thinking about the proposals on the table. So first occurred from Essex, who made it clear that Essex will need and will be proposing an override. So there's almost no scenario we can put forward that would avoid that. Very much see a narrative to build the justification for the override on the significant rise in healthcare costs and contractual obligations. And they have been working with the February 4th proposed budget, also labeled Model A in our scenarios, but with some modifications. So they expressed that they don't expect as large of a use of reserves as we may have put there, both because we should be considering our policy target and because more use of reserves makes next year's budget request just that much bigger. So they're looking forward to that. Second, they encouraged us not to include new school choice revenue on the philosophy that there's too much of a chance that over the long term, that may cause us to need extra teachers, especially if they come in at early grades. They appreciated that we were taking the two proposed admin FTEs, demonstrating a commitment to get the number down as far as we could before voting the budget forward. And then they asked if we could commit to returning any reduction in the healthcare that may come after we vote on a budget to the town rather than reinvesting it. So under that scenario, those kind of assumptions, the likely impact of an override for the average Essex household is just over $500. They were not looking at multiple-year planning at this point for purposes of the schools. They're just focused on this year. Right now, the override amount that they're looking at, they feel would be too big if we tried to look at multiple years at once. And there are still aspects of the school committee budget that the town would like to understand, including changes in FTE counts, understanding program costs, and advocating for the potential of a financial audit similar to what the town in Manchester recently completed. On the Manchester side, they were also using the February 4th proposed budget for their planning purposes. In that scenario, Manchester believes they have a plan to pay for it with a combination of levy increases, including new growth and reserves, and would not need an override for that particular budget. If we, they did express that if we vote a budget that is, you know, in the range of a couple hundred thousand more than that, then they would very likely consider whether or not to do an override. That budget assumes the use of our school committee reserves at 500,000, the reduction of the two admin FTEs, and additional revenue through the OPEB offset and school choice. So they didn't have any recommendation, change any of that or assumptions about those, different assumptions about those. With all of the Manchester levy increases, even though it's not an override structure, including capital projects and the district costs, the likely average Manchester household impact would be just under $500 for the average household. And they did speak a little bit to next year that, you know, if we don't have a significant healthcare issue again like we do this year, they still have some reserves left. And with other, you know, possible new growth and whatnot, they may be able to avoid an override again next year, although they, you know, are not making a commitment to that at all. But proposed next steps, we talked a little bit about the fact that, obviously, we have to pass a budget tonight. They are going to act very quickly as FinCom and Select Courts. They get on town meeting warrants and the numbers worked out and everything. So that's the immediate step. So we wanted to give them a little time to get through all that. But we did want to meet again as the collaborative group to discuss planning for town meeting, including what changed since last year, expectations for FY '27, and to continue the conversation as we think about next fiscal year so we don't wait as long as we did this year.
Anna, anything else?
Awesome.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
Am I understanding correctly that the Essex municipal operating budget growth is taking up all excess capacity from new growth?
That wasn't a specific, they only talked about the school committee. I can't report on that. I might follow up with somebody else.
When they say that the entirety of the school budget is the override amount, does that mean that the only way for us to avoid an override in Essex would be to come in at 0% growth?
Yes.
Yeah.
The way, the, I, so what they told us is that the way that they have structured, the way that they are thinking about the numbers is that they are planning to pay for all the town growth on the regular budget. And I'm trying to remember the details here. But my understanding was that, I'm actually going to ask Ben, could you speak to this? I don't want to speak for you.
I think Pam has the info.
The communication I received is that.
Okay.
If you run by whether Chris is.
Yes.
My understanding is that.
Do you have any clarity here?
The town budget at present level funds the district with all of this year's growth going into an override. That's the present conversation that's communicated to me by birthday.
After our meeting, so that's why I'm having to speak to this.
I inquire for my contingency planning, how should I be looking at it? So that's where we are right now. But like ours, where we were yesterday is not necessarily where we are today, nor will it be tomorrow. So I was just seeking a number to develop a contingency reduction package should we be successful. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, that's it. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you for that clarification. All right, great. Don't leave the policy subcommittee yet, right? I think it's a number four. And the negotiations team did not read, so we're not reporting. So we will move on to our superintendent's report.
All right, thank you. I will start. Knowledge is not my friend today. Just to, because we're going to talk a lot about numbers and how we need to fund the school. I'm just going to start with a little bit of thanks and gratitude. We had a really nice professional development day yesterday, really meaningful. And I just wanted to appreciate and share thanks for Heather and the Professional Development Committee who had responsibility for seeking inputs from teachers and staff about what they needed for support, aligning it with our strategic plan and putting a program together. They did a fantastic job. Thank you to Teresa and Jake for joining us and participating in that. And we had a panel of students. Robbie was our moderator. And we had faculty workshop presenters and we had community partners in. So I just wanted to totally thank everybody who spent a lot of time preparing for that and did a fantastic job. I was able to get to almost all of the sessions, see a snippet of them. And there was some really good work going on yesterday. So for anyone who was wondering what we were doing when the kids were home, we were learning and working on improving our craft. And it was, you know, a very, I think, an uplifting day for everyone. And then thank you to Scalding Education Fund. I just saw their latest blast, the latest round of grants to staff. We really appreciate the support and their mission. I don't want to speak for Lindsay, but the mission of the organization is to support us by providing seed money for new and innovative ideas that in theory, after two to three cycles of support, we would then be able to make a decision about whether to absorb them within to our budget and make them part of our practice. So we thank them for their ongoing support. And then just a preview and a couple of save the dates. We've got some, it's this, we're hitting that time of year where there is something every night for every interest. And over the next two weeks, we're going to have a Math and Literacy Night presented by our structural coaches. Those positions were new last year, new because we cut positions in other areas and reinvested those dollars in a priority area. But our coaches who have been working hard and onboarding in the fall are now starting a second component of their work, which is community outreach and support to parents. So there was a Math Literacy Night being hosted at both Memorial School and Essex Elementary on different nights over the course of two weeks. So we hope if that's an area of interest for you or you're seeking knowledge and support, parents and general community are welcome to attend. And then we've got the superintendent's coffee coming up on the morning of the 27th. And then you can come back at night for the annual STEAM showcase. And it just keeps getting bigger and better every year. And we hope you'll join us for that as well. So a couple of fun things to showcase, both our faculty expertise and our student, our student, a portion of the graduate skills coming up soon. And if you'd like to just talk about the budget or you have ideas and want to share opinions, next Thursday morning, come on by for some coffee and we can, we can talk about next steps there as well. So my, the big part of my update tonight has to do with school choice. I was intending to come prepared to make a recommendation about where we would place the 20 students we had budgeted for. I'm going to lead with my recommendation and then kind of walk you through what it would look like when we start to investigate it. My recommendation at this point, because of where we are with the budget, because whatever budget we land on, like, appears to need an override for passage, which means has to go to ballot, which means it won't be settled until, I think, May the 13th. We'll know our next stage of the game with the ballot vote in Essex. If that all plays out as being described right now. I don't know where to put them safely or if we'll have the staff to accommodate them based on the contingency plan, which probably is just a euphemism for the reduction and cut plan that needs to go along with the financial ask to show what will happen if we aren't successful. So my recommendation isn't to abandon it completely. I think, you know, as we discussed yesterday in the workshop, you look, it's two pieces. It's both a philosophy of building an enrollment, a diversified enrollment, not always just heads, as well as the financial component that we get with it. So right now, I think we just need to hit pause until we can safely offer positions or places to kids and families. Because once we offer them, we can't re-nitigate them. So I would say put a pin in it for now and let's see where we are on May 13th and revisit. Happy to show you, though, my preliminary thinking on what placement might look like. We had over 200 applications this year. It's very popular to join the district right now. I think it was close to 230 applications. So the first thing we do when we start to assess school choice, and I think once you see where we're at, you'll understand my recommendation even more. So we know we're dealing with some enrollment issues in that we've had some declining enrollment. We've had a projection report from MSVA, so a professional study. The full report in detail with methodology is available online. That shows, you know, we did, through the late, like, the 28 to 2013 period, we did have an escalation in enrollment at about 25, 28%. And now we've come back down more to the pre-2008, early 2000s resident-student level during that. But we're at the tail end of it and it appears to be tailing off. And then it's going to increase ever so slightly over the next few years. So we're kind of, I would use the phrase plateauing to kind of define where we are right now. So with that in mind, we take a look at what the projected enrollment would be for the fall. Not a perfect science. Not a perfect science, right? This is based on the kids we have in seats in district right now. If we carry them forward to grade level, this is what it will look like. It doesn't account for anyone who registers late for K. So anyone who registers from now to the end of the year or over the summer, and Maria's sitting to my left and knows that, there's, we go through little upticks at different points all throughout this next time period where we get kids and families moving in. So these numbers may change in the fall, so it's not, you know, we're not moving the numbers on you, but there's a likelihood that they could go up and down and then back up again. So again, projection based on where we are today. So looking ahead at where we are next year, logical places to place school choice students based on our staffing and current enrollment would be at kindergarten and first grade at Essex Elementary. We have, we are under benchmark in both of those grade levels with 12 and 13 as compared to 16 and 22 average class size at Memorial School. So I would look to those two grade levels and then also to the sixth grade as another area where we could absorb some school choice students, and it's also a natural transition point. So with the enrollment in mind, we look ahead and say, okay, where can we place? So to meet our target of 20, I was going to propose and had this all done prior to yesterday in some of our conversations about where the budget's going. I would place one student at Memorial, eight at Essex Elementary, which actually would bring them up to same average class size. I would put four at first grade at Essex, bringing them up to 15, still making both classes under benchmark and giving them room to grow over the years. I place another student at the third grade and sixth, at the sixth grade. If you look on the left-hand side, you see where the current school choice, what the current school choice enrollment is for that grade level. I think our cap is right around that 10 to 12 student, so that's why seven, eight, nine is grayed out. I think we've already hit max there as the school choice, the number of school choice students per total, for the total grade. So that was the plan, and that's where my thinking is. Tonight, you'll hear a very high-level assessment of kind of the quantity of reduction that we'll need to backstop the budget. And in doing that, I can't guarantee that these positions in these grade levels will have capacity, or the whole school will have the capacity of additional resources to support kids. So that's why I'm saying put a pin in it right now. It's just not a blanket walk away from school choice. I don't think we should. I think there's a lot of conversation to be had, but I don't think I can make a good judgment on whether this is a safe bet or not at this point in time. So that is where I'm recommending we be at school choice. Happy to take questions.
When we move forward with school choice, if we move forward with school choice, do we have to do that all at once, or are we able to accept students at different periods throughout the upcoming timeline?
In theory, I can take, the superintendent could take school choice throughout the year as space.
Are we able to, because we have a sibling prioritization, look at where we have siblings coming in in those grades?
They are accounted, all siblings would be accounted for in that recommendation. So the siblings are embedded in those numbers.
Right. I was just wondering if we're able to approve moving on with those separately.
The same reservation? Yes, we could. We certainly could say, oh, we'll take nine siblings now and then assess the 11, remaining 11 slots later on. I would still be targeting the same areas, and if, let's say, one of the recommendations was, and this is not yet anyway solidified, reduce a first or second grade teacher, then we don't have any space for anybody. So I may, what I think I do know from past experience, and this is not scientific data, but early-grade students and sibling families, May 13th likely isn't going to be a problem if we have availability then. It'll get more, ninth graders, I think we would have a really hard time.
Right.
Sixth grade, I think it's a little bit dicey. But again, there are siblings underlying each of those numbers, so a communication to them about where we stand, we can get a sense of who, who's going to stick with us and be able to wait it out.
I definitely have some questions about placement that you're proposing, but I also accept your recommendation that it doesn't make sense in light of where things stand with the budget. So what I'm wondering is, will we have a chance to further discuss the recommended placements?
Yep. We won't go ahead with it without breaking with that.
If we were, I know that we have a lot on our agenda tonight, but if we were, I just, if we were to approve school choice students in grades that we knew would not be impacted, like, are there any kids that we can take to both offset their costs and to provide their families with...
In our working model, there is no grade level on there that isn't impacted by reduction of staff.
Thank you. I was already announced, sir.
No, that felt uplifting and enough, so I'll...
Sorry.
All right, so moving on, the first section of our continued business is stabilization funds and the appropriation of those funds for the Essex Elementary feasibility study. And this is pretty straightforward vote to approve. Pam, do you want to just run through it again quickly for everyone?
Sure. Stabilization fund is our capital fund. We had earmarked $500,000 and went through a series of votes when we were preparing to put the feasibility study out to the two towns for approval. So the cost of the feasibility study, the budget is 1.5 million, split three ways. It split three ways originally, and then the remainder, the remain, well, we paid $500,000, so one-third of the total, and then the remaining amount is split through the capital proportion formula to the two towns. So about 65, 35, 60, 40. So this is just the vote now to transfer the money from the stabilization cap where it currently sits into the account that will become the Essex Memorial, Essex Building Project Fund. And then Michelle will send out invoices to the two towns or notices to the two towns. I'm not sure what the official word is for that, so they can then put the funding in because once we formalized a contract, which needs to be approved by MSVA on April 7th, at that point, they'll start to invoice us for time.
Anyone have any questions? So I'd like to make a motion to approve funding of the Essex Elementary feasibility study from our stabilization, stabilization fund. Do I have a second?
Second. Clarifying question, do we need to follow the motion language? Is there, are we good?
Just got it.
Got it. I'm sure it's fine.
All right, any questions? All right, and we'll take a vote. All those in favor? All right, thank you. Okay, so moving on to our FY '26 final budget workshop. It's for now. Do you, how do we want to kick things off?
You want us to give you a quick status report?
Yeah.
I think that would be a statement.
Documents, documents, about that reduction, as well as some other things that we talked about yesterday. You also have a scenarios document, and I'm happy to go through the scenarios again, if that's helpful for people. I'm going to take my lead from you in terms of how much information we want to go through first before discussion. But the scenarios that we had discussed yesterday also now have a kind of profile of what the impact might be on towns and taxpayers. Again, these are all estimates based on publicly available information, so I certainly will defer to both towns to, you know, once we pass a budget, come up with the actual numbers for this, but this is, it gives you enough, I think, to plan on. But the four scenarios that we talked about yesterday, the four, the ones that were introduced at our last meeting, would you like me to put them up and walk through them quickly, or would you just speak to them and move forward?
I think putting them up for people that are online, people here personally think would be beneficial.
Give me one second. So this is the document we worked from yesterday. And if anyone pulled the document from last meeting, it should look familiar. It's the four scenarios that we talked about, and what it does in terms of budget change over the year, total assessment and then assessment to each town. And again, if you're new to the process, the assessment to each town is essentially, if our budget increases, you know, $2 million, what does that look like when it's run through the district apportionment formula, which is set up in the regional agreement and creates kind of the bill for each town? So we include that because as Essex and Manchester follow and try to plan through their boards, that's the number that impacts each town individually. So we looked at four different options. The budget we proposed on 2-4, it made some, there, we looked at a carry-forward budget, which we're now calling the modified carry-forward budget. And we also looked at the budget scenario that basically says 3-5 is always our mission. What, how do we use all of our reserves to get down to 3-5? And last time, we had closed the meeting, talking about the potential, kind of, if I had my dream budget, what would my recommendation be? And it would be the actual budget with no reserves, reset the table and go forward. And that's the FY '26 actual no-reserves use of budget. And what I can show you is maybe working backwards, why these, why these two, for me tonight, are grayed out. And I think part of it has to do with timeline, and part of it has to do with managing risk. And those may not be good reasons for the committee, and the committee can certainly go in any direction that it would like. And I certainly understand why it may sound frustrating to parents, but I am trying to do the best I can to manage what a potential outcome could be and how devastating that could be on the district. So if we were to go with the all-in budget, that equates to, and I think this is a little hard to see. What that equates to, if you can, you know, strain your eyes, and this is available online as well, you can pop on our finance page and open it up and take a look at it. So if we were to say, the budget is the budget, we had a healthcare, bad healthcare break, we committed to contracts, and this is what it costs, our gap between our available resources and what the budget would be is about $2.9 million. So we would be asking, we would be passing forward all of that bill to the towns and then having to create a cut package in the event that an override doesn't pass in the number of $2.9 million. We don't have enough resources to backstop a $2.9 million risk, which has led me to two of the more conservative models for this year. The other piece with this is whether it was intended to be or not, the 2-4 proposed budget has been the working model for everyone and what I think our collaborative partners have been preparing for. Manchester is printing its budget tomorrow morning, and they're waiting on our number that we're going to get to them by 11 o'clock tonight, or maybe 9 o'clock tomorrow morning, depending on how late we're here. So I think we haven't done a lot of discussion around what this, what the implication of this really is, how we would rule this out, how we engage the towns, what it might mean to the town finances, or how they would prepare for it. That being said, it's still in here. I'm not going to recommend this going forward. I think if we were to do this, we would probably want more time to prepare and really get everybody more vocally endorsing this direction. Right now, I think we're still struggling with even the modified model. And Greg, that number I arrived at, just in case you're wondering, it's the difference between what you're going to be able to catch, what you're going to be able to manage in the 7.29 budget. This is the amount over that. And I just used, if everyone, everyone can get to it, it's the DOR calculator, and you can kind of put in the number, and it's going to spit out what it might mean for you as a taxpayer. So that's the all-in budget. That budget would reset the table, bring in some new revenue, but we can't guarantee that the budget wouldn't grow at 5% again next year. So the flip side of this, that model, also grayed out, is pass very little or nothing onto the town and get the entire budget to 3.5% by using all of our available reserves. So everything we have in all the different accounts, pull it together and get the number down to 3.5%, which has, over the years, kind of been our working target. If we were to do that, that, from what we're understanding about how Essex is going to structure, it would still leave them with an override at about 4.50, which would translate to about 280 per household and leave us with a contingency plan at $917,000 in cuts. The problem with this one is we barely have enough money to do it. We have no, I mean, we haven't factored in, and there's really no way to judge that we could be hit by federal funding reductions or holds. We don't know how that's going to play out, but that gives us very little money for next year. So it's either, you know, perhaps we're just doing the same exercise next year with large cuts, but it doesn't give us a lot in reserves to manage potential problems or other setbacks along the way, or next year being a worse financial year than this year. So these two have been grayed out and kind of set aside as the two more extreme models, which leaves us with the level services and the proposed budget. I'll go proposed first and say to this group and to the committee that the proposed budget and the level services budget is the same financial impact to town with it, to the towns within a few hundred dollars, I believe. The proposed budget is where we started. It includes the two administrative reductions. It uses $500,000 of excess and deficiency reserve. There's also another $150,000. It's not a reserve, but it's an offset, we call it, of $150,000 that we're going to reduce our contribution to the OPEB fund for this year, and it includes $500,000 in school choice revenue. So from all the original models, the school choice revenue has been dropped from $600,000 to $500,000. So this model maintains the two administrative position reductions and reallocates two teaching positions from the high school, one to the middle school, and one to the elementary school, to Memorial Elementary, to deal with class size concerns and to try to put sixth grade oral language back in play. It's a 7.29%, about $886,000, and a potential override for Essex for $577 per household. We're running out of categorizing terms. This is the modified carry-forward level services budget revised on 3/7/20, 3/17/25. So what this does is this one retains the middle school principal, moves forward with the facilities restructuring, reallocates the two teaching positions from the high school, one to the middle school, one to the memorial school, and achieves this by keeping the dollar amount almost level to the towns, but increasing our reserves to $600,000. So basically, we are going to, at this point, we are going to go through a full search for a principal. If we go with this budget, I would be doing an interim for the same reason we're looking at holding on school choice. I'm in no position to start a search now, it's already late. If we start a search in June, I don't think we're going to get the best. It's a scarce market right now, and I don't think we'd be getting the best candidates that we could in June. And when we look after, maybe at the timeline of how this might play out, there's a good potential that we're not doing anything with any of this until August, almost at the eve of school. So what this does is it preserves the funding, it allows us to go through a year with an interim and assess and see where we are financially and see what we want to do going forward. So it buys us some time, but I think it addresses the fear that if we just straight release the funds, we'll never get the funds back because there's no guarantee that next year is any better. So that's, I'm going to say no on the, on the actual budget, no on the reserves, and if the committee, I'll just be very honest, you know, I do think we could develop and build into a solid model of combined, of a combined middle high school. There's also value in retaining the middle school principal. At the point where we're putting together proposed budget, I'm looking at creating $2 million in cuts. So we're going to put it in, but it's also going to be number one on the list because I, you know, I think where I was at the end of the last meeting, we need some guidance on what direction you want your district to go. And if it's in the direction of having to, and it's, no value judgments are here, but if it's in the direction of having to hit... But if it's in the, in the direction of having to hit certain target numbers, we're going to have to get used to doing things differently. We're going to have to accept that the ideal model that we might build for you for a middle school may not be attainable in that structure. That's what the proposed budget addressed. We had been hearing for years, for the past three years, that people were very concerned that we weren't making administrative cuts. So we took advantage of attrition and the potential for restructuring and put those forward. If the committee can support it and will endorse maintaining the middle school principal, we'll happen to accept level services budget. So my, I think my recommendation is either of those two. It's a flat number. And if I, I think the level services will buy us a little bit of time.
Pam, interim role, do you have someone internal identified for that? Or you just, it's an idea that you have?
What we've done, what we did at Memorial is we hired a retired principal to come in for the year. They bring us usually expertise and perspective and can help us make some decisions about things. What I might, if we get out of this, the budget quickly and have some decisions, what I would love to do is find someone who is either a K8 principal or someone who had middle high school experience, who could come in and help us brainstorm, take a look at things, see what we might be able to do, where we could make some smart changes and where we might want to hold strong. I definitely have my own ideas. I wouldn't put forward something I didn't think we could execute. So I think we could, we could execute it and we would always be striving to build the best program. But if money's not an issue, I would retain a principal. I mean, so I guess I'm forced between what I ideally would like it to be and what the reality that we face. So those are the scenarios. And we're fast.
Anyone have any additional questions just about the scenarios? We're all pretty much clear where we're at. All right. So there's a couple of different ways that we could run this. I suppose it's probably best to go around in a circle initially and sort of at a minimum, maybe start with, you know, if you have a, you know, you don't have to say one way or another. But I suppose the first thing would be to, maybe take a little bit of straw poll and eliminate the two positions, the two budgets in gray. And we can discuss that a little bit and feel free to, you know, if you have pros and cons of, you know, not going any of those directions, you can share. Who wants to start?
Do you?
No, go ahead.
Would you like to start with a motion for us to discuss or you want?
Sure. Well, so in terms of a motion, I don't have a motion to like adopt a specific budget because I don't think we're close yet and this is still the workshop part of it.
I don't think, that's my point of clarification. I think we're past workshop. We did another workshop yesterday and so I'm, I'm, my request to you as chair is to consider whether it is in fact the time to just move forward with motion discussion and decisions.
While you're contemplating, I could share two more probably good pieces of information that you probably already have embedded. Neither of these, neither of the scenarios, actually any of the scenarios don't necess- don't stop the necessity potentially for an override next year. It would probably put us somewhere in that 5% to 7% range if our projection on healthcare around 50% holds. And the only other piece for consideration as you think about the models is we had talked about yesterday, the very high level reduction look, which I can bring more fully developed to you on the first. But just to create a contingency plan for the 2,077 in either the proposed or level services budget, you know, we're looking at somewhere between 21 and 27 positions. And those are all kinds of positions. There's, you know, classroom teacher positions, there are support positions, the TAs, there's administrative assistant. There's a little bit of everything in there. We're working to solidify it. We've done a line by line and can get to the 21.2. We have to go and identify another six and a half. And again, I'm going to preface this all because, you know, everyone's watching and logging things. If we can find something other than a, a position, the six and a half might go to six. So this document might look different in another iteration. It doesn't mean that it was switched. It just means that things may evolve. But that's the general ballpark of what $2 million looks like. And it's divided out expenses and personnel, 80, 20% like our budget. So just to give you a sense of, that's just the first $2 million. So when I started to look at that actual budget to go in almost another full million, it just, I, I don't think I can get us there. I mean, I can get you there, I just don't, that I would put my name on it. So these are just, I think, important to consider because either of the two scenarios that we choose, we are still going to have to go through the 6%.
Go ahead, Erica.
Are you entertaining motions?
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion to support the revised level services budget.
Which one is that?
Second, second one.
The modified carry forward level.
Can we get back to the title, please? Well, that's it actually, yes. The 2026 modified carry forward level services budget.
Just a second. Come up with a, something short.
It really rolls right off your tongue.
B, option B.
This is what it has.
Did somebody second?
Okay, I heard a second, so I'll take a quick vote. All those in favor?
Wait, no.
And we can all go on.
Sorry, I meant, sorry, I'm super bow, I'm, I need discussion.
So it's this one.
I just want to confirm that that is the budget in the amount of $32,682,198. That is the second line on this budget scenario this year. That's just what I clarify for everybody.
I'm just going to give it a highlight so people can see what's in it.
Yes, that was the one.
Can I just start?
Yep.
Chris, so, you guys support this budget, but I, I really am strongly for the, having a facilities manager at the school. There's, I think it's just going to cost us more in the long run. You know, vandalism happens and I think if we have someone at our buildings, you know, boots on the ground, taking care of these things as they happen, it just reduces, you know, further vandalism. When you let things sit, it's like broken windows theory, you know, things just get worse. And so I think, you know, this is a short term fix, but in the long run, it's going to cost us. I see it in my, my job every day in real estate development. You know, the best properties are the ones that are managed, you know, to a high level because then everybody who lives there cares. And so when you have someone at your building, you're really taking care of things, then everybody buys into that. So that's what I want to say. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I'm grateful, Erica, making this motion. This is the budget that I am in favor of tonight. And I actually prepared my things because we received an email from someone today who said, whatever you decide, make sure you can explain how you got there and be able to back it up. And so I feel that that's fair because I, in our last meeting, also spoke very strongly about going all in, pulling all reserves out. And, and that's what I had planned to come to support tonight with our committee. But we've had new information and that's why we don't make final decisions until it's time to make a vote. Because we had an additional meeting last Wednesday. We had another workshop yesterday and new information has come in. So to be clear, this is going to sound really negative, but I do not believe that this budget aligns with our strategic plan fully. I do not support or agree with the facilities manager reduction. I don't think that's wise stewardship of our assets. I especially am not in favor of reducing our OPEB contribution to offset costs. I think that we will be in a stronger ability to negotiate the next time our contract is up and we need to reevaluate the contract, especially for retiree healthcare. I think we'll be in a much stronger position if we have fully and without any question whatsoever, complied with our obligations contractually on OPEB. Not in favor of pausing school choice at the request of Town of Essex to just not include that as part of our structure. But I do understand the point about staffing being unclear right now. And I fully believe that the principal position should be funded through the assessment, not the use of reserves, though I understand why you've done it here. Again, I planned to, to, to support no reserve use on this. But I think that it is reasonable and compelling that we've had this request from the Manchester Finance Committee to keep to a certain level of the 7.29. Given this late stage in the game, I think that it was responsible of them to utilize a number higher than, than the lowest we had moved forward with. And we have indeed, as a committee, met the Town of Essex budget requests for the last five years, almost fully. So I can support the use of reserves to meet this Manchester request at this time, even though I'll have to hold my nose and swallow it while we do the OPEB situation there. But I do so only with open public expression that I am going to next year be fully advocating, now I probably won't even wait till next year, that our committee commit early on to level services with no use of reserves next year, knowing that there will be a larger override and a bigger hole to dig out of. And however my town, Town of Essex, chooses to structure their funding mechanism for this year, I will move forward and try to support that the best I can. But I think it's wise if we're going to do this. We know this is coming next year too. And I don't want to be called out for kicking the can. I'm saying right now, that's what I'm supporting next year. And I hope that we can come to some consensus on that. I can also support the request to apply additional healthcare savings to reduce the assessment. I think that's reasonable this time. My, I'm almost done. I'm mindful of Katie Vandy's comments, that she made the public comment about the affordability of Essex. She's right that there are people who struggle to pay the increased tax burden and this will result probably in an override request again. That's outside my purview. And once we decide on our budget, they can make their choices. But based on the info we've received, it sounds like that's where it may be going. But I'm also mindful of a public comment that has really stuck with me from the Essex, the Essex Elementary School budget hearing of someone who's had been in Essex, or had, had kids at EES, has kids at Memorial now, who doesn't have the vast resources that perhaps some others in our community does and who spoke strongly saying, my kids need what this district provides. My town that has a different socioeconomic level in some ways than Manchester, those kids need what this district provides. And it's my responsibility as a school committee member to support that. So this to me is the compromise I'm willing to make to strategically keep the support of the Manchester Finance Committee, recognizing that next year, it's going to be all in. And I truly think that if my town doesn't start to look at this and structure things differently, we're absolutely putting the vote on the Essex Elementary School project in jeopardy. So my hope is not to be a negative Nellie, but this is a compromise to me without question. We can call it level service, modified level services, carry forward, but it's a compromise to me. So, but I will vote for it. And I'm grateful for all the work you've put into it. It's been nothing but nonstop changes.
And we could rename it compliments of those.
Oh gosh, don't.
Be shorter.
Bring me back two years. That's the end of my comment.
Okay.
I made the motion, so I, I'm just going to describe why I made it. We're faced with two budgets with the same bottom line. And in choosing between those top two budgets, I'm guided by the fact that when Pam introduced the first proposed budget, the second budget, she said she was calling it proposed because she could not recommend it. And those words have stuck with me. Given that, I don't think that this is the right time to rush into cutting our principal due to the mere fortuity of a retirement. I do think it's possible that our district can exist with only one principal, but I think that warrants further consideration and study. And the interim policy that Pam's proposing gives us a time to do that and to decide if it's right or not for our district. We've made approximately 15 cuts in five years and I can't support cutting a key position without taking the time to study if that's the right direction. In making that choice, I want to acknowledge that it's not enough that anyone sitting around the table vote in support of this budget. Really, this is going to take a ton of hard work. We already know from two years ago that an override failed and this override is going to be more significant. It requires a significant amount of community mobilization and residents willing to bring the energy to get out the vote. People need to understand that if this budget doesn't pass, as Pam already alluded to, we're talking about 21 to 27 positions. Make no mistake about it, that is a fundamentally different school district. Like Teresa said, in choosing this budget, unfortunately, I want to recognize that this doesn't solve the challenges we're facing. I don't want anyone to assume that if we pass the level services budget tonight, that we're out of the woods. Here are some things that I think we need to consider moving forward. Again, like Teresa, we spent the last two years drafting our reserve policy. We are already in violation. This can't continue to go on and it shouldn't go on, not only because we're violating our reserve policy, it shouldn't go on because it's really bad fiscal management and because we are making the problems worse for our community. And I regret that. I wish this had been the year to fix it, but it's not. If we're going to remove reserves, we are talking about a correction next year, just to remove the reserves. And if we're going to talk about the correction, I really want everyone to start thinking about what that means beyond removing the reserve, removing reserves from our operating budget. Does it mean adding back librarians? Does it mean adding back elementary school foreign languages? What does a correction look like? Let's get a clear picture of what we're working toward. And third, and most importantly, we need to expand engagement. Tonight is great. There's a lot of people here, there are a lot of people listening. But for most of the three years that I've been on this committee, we've had two dedicated attendees, you know, give or take, any given night. And, and that's on us. I really think we've sat here and we've talked about the fact that we need to expand engagement, but we've been faced with a lot of time sensitive demands that require us to turn to those. So we haven't figured out how to better engage our communities in the post-COVID era. And we need to do that. We need to be able to correct false narratives. And the one false narrative that continues to derail our budget process is why in a time of declining enrollment, we continue to see growing budgets. But we've addressed this in any number of public meetings and yet the false narrative remains. And it, it's really hard unless we are reaching out consistently to members of our community to explain the simple fact, inflation, CPI index, even this, from this year to last year, is up 3.5%. You add to that the fact that we have a different composition of students in our district and that the needs that we're servicing are more severe, it is simply more expensive to run the school than it used to be. And that, that's a fact. And until we get out there and really interact with enough people to explain that, we are deflecting from the bigger structural problem, which is that schools do not run at 2.5%. They don't, and most communities recognize this and they plan around it. We have a teacher's contract that grows above 4%. We have inflation, let's set aside healthcare. We can't possibly mathematically end up beneath 2.5%. So we need to figure out how to engage our communities, surrounding what that looks like and what the best things for our two towns are to be able to continue to support that. I would just say the connection with that, our teachers are what make this building great. And we have a Maida contract. It's expensive, we pay, we pay our teachers well. We need to pay our teachers well. If you listen to the news, there is a national shortage of teachers. If you watch the local news, there are strikes in surrounding communities. We need to be mindful of that and figure out how best to approach it. Okay, I'm getting there, promise. We need to be cognizant that while I'm talking about a correction, we are going to be pursuing two financial challenges at once next year. This is not the strategy I would have chosen, but it's where we are. And so I'm going to choose to appreciate the symmetry. Over the next 12 months, our communities need to work together to support two separate but equally important things. We need to support our capital project to address Essex Elementary School. And at the same time, we need to support a correction in our district's operating budget. Both communities, Manchester and Essex, need to show up for each other. They need to show up for the schools and they need to take the year to figure out how to support both goals. Okay, so in saying all this, I want to recognize that families are facing hard choices and our district doesn't operate in a bubble. Choices we make for our schools impact other town services. We need to recognize that the majority of our constituents aren't sitting in this room and they don't have kids that attend this district. Why do our schools matter? During this budget season, I've thought about that a lot because of the fact that I'm about to be one of those people. In two years, my kids are no longer part of this district. And like many taxpayers, my priorities are shifting too. I'm staring down the barrel of three college tuitions nearly simultaneously. I'm staring down the barrel of three college tuitions nearly simultaneously. So I get it, tax dollars aren't unlimited. But the shift in my own family helps me solidify the way I think about our schools. Being the type of town where young families want to move because of our school system, as so many people said here tonight, that matters. Boston Rep Magazine ranked our school number three out of 150 school, high schools. And say what you want about rankings, they were the first thing we looked to when we were deciding to leave Boston 10 years ago. Young families moving to our district supports our economies, it supports our housing values, it supports the businesses that struggle to survive in small neighborhoods. But in addition to the economic benefits, there's other intangibles. Our district's vision of the graduate isn't just important to our students. It's important to our community. Raising the next generation to be intellectually curious, to be critical thinkers in the age of AI and social media and political turmoil, that matters more than it ever has before. And finally, and I swear this is the end, supporting our schools is the one thing we get to choose. In a world where it feels like there's a lot beyond our control, we can choose to prioritize our schools and prioritize our communities and our futures. But the seven people sitting at this table can't do that alone. And I say that as someone who is likely to very soon be sitting on the other side of this table. The seven people at this table will need our support. We have to work together as a community because we have really big things that require extensive involvement and engagement. That's it.
Thank you, Erica, that was well said. So, um, so I'll just start by saying I'm, I'm very, I try to approach this very pragmatically, right? I think in some ways, in this kind of context, compromise is where you need to be, right? If somebody's happy, then, then that means that other people are probably getting overlooked. Ideally, we'd all love to fully fund the schools and ask, give everything they, they ask for, right? That, that'd be the ideal, but the reality is for all the reasons that Erica just nicely laid out, right? Compromise is where we need to be. And sometimes the best interest of faculty and students is to compromise rather than create upheaval during, during the process. So, you know, the trajectory that we've experienced as a district over the past five or so years and that we're, we supporting to the modeling that we've been doing for a little, for the past month or two. You know, we're, we're on a continual belt tightening process, right? Where there is not a scenario out there right now, especially with the uncertainty of the federal scenario, federal situation right now, where we're going to get a windfall and where things are going to be easy for us. So, um, we need to do the work of thinking through alternatives. And so I appreciate on the, on the specific scenario of the middle school principal having an interim to think that through, right? You don't think it through when you have to do it in a month, right? When you, when you're forced into it because of a failed override or some similar situation, nobody thinks well or does good work in that scenario. So I appreciate the opportunity to take this year to think that through and, and work through ideas in a similar way we're, we're still doing with the schedules and so on. I am a little concerned that we are committing in this, in this model, or in this proposal, the 600,000 reserves. You, several of you have already spoken to the fact that that makes our job next year harder. And we, we have been adamant that we need to protect that. But I understand why we're doing it, right? And that comes, it, it's the basis of a longer term strategy of walking our way out of the hole that we've been building over the years. Even though we don't officially have a strategy either as a committee or as towns, it forms the basis of that at least. And I, I, I can't commit us to taking a certain action for next year, right? As much as I think it's great, Teresa, you know, to say that would be wonderful to do, we have to give ourselves the chance to work with the towns on what that strategy is rather than dictated. I appreciate both Brian and Greg, your comments over this meeting and previously that, you know, whether or not we structure this as an override or if it's foreign out of town reserves or our reserves, but it still hits taxpayers in the pocket one way or another. So we have to make this year's advocacy and Erica, your point, future year advocacy about both towns, right? It's not just about Essex passing an override. It is about all of us getting behind the need for, for this budget. And so while I don't like the fact that we're committing so much reserves, at the same time, you know, 100,000 is, you know, one third of 1% of the budget. So I'm, I'm not going to hold things up because of that. I think we need to do it and we'll, we'll figure out how to deal with it next year with the town. So I appreciate the towns as tough as it has been to do. I appreciate that we are all back into some form of collaboration. We have work to do on, on making that productive, but we cannot solve this alone, right? We have to, we have to be working as a three, three agency or three organizational collaboration. So thank you.
All right. So the way I look at the four scenarios, um, and you can see on my sheet that break down to the four categories is basically what we're comparing to and what I feel comfortable. It's basically reserve, how much reserve we use, whether we use school choice or not, whether we enroll additional school choice students or not to get 100K or use the 150K OPEB or the FTE, to the FTE reduction. So those are the four major choices between the four categories, the scenarios that we're choosing. Reserves, I don't, I, I, it makes me feel uncomfortable if we want to use 1.6 million dollars completely. That's the model C, number, number three. It also doesn't make me, like Pam was saying, that it's too risky to use zero reserve at this point when we were so late in the game without additional planning, you know, plans in place, but how are we going to achieve that? So between 500K and 600K, I feel okay with submitting 600K if that means that we can maintain the principal, the interim principal position to kind of help us transition if that's what, you know, the administration decide that that is the model that we're going into or not. So I feel for the balance of 600K. School choice in both two top models is not enrolling school choice students. I do think that we live in a bubble between the two towns, as, as we all know. So I do think that having the school choice students is another way for us to have diversity. So I advocate for that, but I understand that having the school choice students or promising them the enrollment before we have the secure budget settled in, that has more implications in later on. So I support to delay the school choice and so we can propose that. OPEB, since the experts already told us that having a 150K deduction in the contribution wouldn't impact our long-term goal, I'm okay with that as well. So to sum up, I support the modified carry forward level services budget advice from 2017. I do want to say that there is a lot of work ahead, as everybody else said. I don't know if we can promise anything, but I do say that over the past three years, I, you know, even though this is not ideal, I do see progress. I, you know, at least now we are all sitting together between the, you know, three entities discussing what the next five years is going to look like, even though we don't have a idea. So I was just thinking that everybody to continue to, you know, have faith in each other and stop the name-calling and just support each other. And we can rebuild trust between the two towns. We'll make a progress.
Okay. I support that budget. I have some reservations about it. I'm dubious of spending 600K. Am I correct in thinking that that would bring our reserve percentage down closer to 6%? We are, it's, I don't need anything exact thing, it's all part, it's so. If I, if we moved forward with this budget, I would, um, like to be clear in my understanding that we are doing so despite our policy and that in order to honor our policy in the future, that will mean a larger amount next year needs to come from our towns. Our schools are not extravagant, they're not extravagant cost. And it does seem to me as though the Town of Essex has that, the capacity within their reserve funds. I know that Mr. Subriki has pointed out that those are specific funds for specific things and that they cannot be spent on the school budget. I did just pull up the budget bucket, we book, there are 21 different reserve funds. The Community Preservation Fund, $1 million. Sale of Real Estate Fund, $2.2 million. Town History Celebration Fund, $45,000. Recreation Capital Improvement Fund, $115,000. Manchester Essex Regional School District Aportionment Stabilization Fund, $50,000. Imagine if we created dozens of small funds and put all of our reserves in them and said that our money was no longer available to be spent on things like health insurance premiums. The money is there, it is more difficult to spend because it has been funneled into these accounts that require a two-thirds vote. If the Town of Essex wants to show support for the schools and time a major school budget override to coincide with the approval of our new Essex Elementary, they could choose to delay the override in the Town of Essex through the use of town reserves. So an override is inevitable. The schools cannot grow at 0%, but the resource of town reserves gives the Town of Essex the choice of when they will pass that override onto the town. So if they believe that an override will pass when bundled with the new Essex Elementary, we have the flexibility to do that with our town reserves. So I ask our Essex town leaders, I know that they are listening, Essex residents, what is the alternative? I'm fearful that if we cut services to the extent that would be required for a 2.5% budget increase, as has been requested from the Essex Finance Committee, that proposed budget is not going to pass in Manchester. We're going to be forced into a corner, we're going to end up at a super town meeting. And then what? We're either going to have to pay for it or we cannot participate in a regional district anymore. And Essex would leave the district with no capital assets. We don't have a building in our town. So now we are paying to send students, tuition students out to neighboring districts and we have no say in them. We don't have a vote in those towns. There is no alternative. If we are tuitioning students out to a neighboring town, we also don't get any say in the increase in their budget every year. And there are no neighboring districts that increase at two and a half percent. There is literally no feasible alternative here. To me, the only options, the only questions that we need to be discussed, discussing are how much reserves we're going to spend, whether we're going to accept school choice students and whether we are going to maintain the school principal. I think that it's crazy to eliminate that position right now. The kids who are in our middle school, I know I've said it before, experience COVID in kindergarten, first grade and second grade. That's our middle school population next year. If they're coming from Essex Elementary, they've also had three school principals in their career at Essex Elementary. We talk all the time about how student needs don't equal numbers. Class size does not equal student need. These are kids who need stability and we owe that to them. Bringing in an interim can help us have time to assess how we meet those needs. After that time, if we've done a review and we find a way to meet their needs without that position, great. We have an interim, it's an easy, smooth, mindful, purposeful transition. But it's not because we are at a critical point in our budget where we have to cart, start cutting heads of the cost of our students. I would like to discuss school choice students. They enrich our schools, they offset the assessment that we send to our towns. If we are not including them in the budget right now, I'd like to set specific date that we're going to revisit it, like a communication to go out to students who were in our school choice lottery. And I would like for us to consider how we would use those funds should we have our budget approved and then also decide to accept school choice students. Is that money going to be a direct offset to our towns? Or is that money going to go back into our reserves? I would argue that it should go back into our reserves. Think I'm done.
All right. So I'll go last now, it's pretty brief, but as far as the options that are in front of us, um, you know, this is the option that I would also support. But fully recognizing that, you know, the implications of this and the entire committee and probably everyone else listening as well. Traditionally, when school districts ask for a correction, it's to actually correct something that's been happening before. This budget doesn't do that at all. In fact, we're now going to be almost doubling. Is it like a double or not quite? It was 350 last year, the amount of reserves that we used. So we're, we're close to doubling the amount of reserves that we used last year in this essence. So this is not a correction at all, which means that this is a big compromise for me. We've been waiting and pursuing and, and working towards a correction since I've been on the committee four years ago. And from my understanding, it's before, you know, it's gone before then as well. We are well past due, given the fact of inflation, uh, you know, and, and I think I've said a lot of this before and I think everyone sort of understands, but there are simple realities and the reality is that we need to have a serious conversation about what our correction looks like. And we're pretty much at that point, there is no more give after this year. You know, it, it's, it's, even this year, um, we're looking at this, um, you know, I want to make sure that everyone understands the potential cuts. Even with this, if this budget fails, you know, at town meetings or at the ballot. We could talk about communicating and working with our town partners. We need to make sure that we're always committing very clear on, um, we need to start. We need to start moving in a different direction, in my opinion. And I don't think this budget does that, but I do think that it, uh, you know, preserves some things that are, that are important, adds some risk to what we, the risky situation we've already been in for the past five years and sets us up for some really big decisions, either this year or next year. So, um, you know, I support this budget because this is where we're at, but it is a big compromise. So, you know, I've said this to a lot to anyone who will listen, but I, I do very much consider all of our stakeholders when I make any decision here, you know, on the school committee. And I try to apply common sense and critical thinking to all of it. We're, we're getting to the point that none of this is common sense anymore and, you know, there is no critical thinking moving forward. And I, I think everyone's seen that with, uh, you know, how we're proposing a budget and can't even recommend budgets. So this is serious, we'll need a lot of support from the community to start to move in the right direction. Because at this point, you know, this will directly affect the kids if we don't start working right away after this budget season is over. So that's really all I have to say, but. We'll go around for a second round. Anyone wants to? Got Teresa started.
I will keep it much briefer this time. Um, but just in, in light of the, the comments that we're making, I think, especially as, as you were speaking, I'm, I'm reminded of there, there seems to be a disconnect between the way I process some of our budget things and the way maybe some other people do. We, in, in my eyes and my understanding, we're not asking for a correction. We are setting the budget. And then our town partners have to choose the mechanism by which they pay that bill. This district has been really mindful to not just send the bill, right? In a municipality where it's one town and they set the amount of money for the school budget. Then the school committee might say, we need to ask for a correction. We're underwater with this, this and this. But the reason I say that is because as, as we're talking about moving forward and working with our town partners and now we're finally working with them again. I, I want to remind everyone, this has been a long-term, there had, there was a, a long-term tradition of the collaboration group meetings that was really effective for a lot of years. And we reached a point where that happening in private meetings was no longer effective. Now we have everyone coming to the table in public meetings. It's been well received. Progress can be made, but I know that problem solving can happen because it did happen for a lot of years. That people were able to, to make those, um, decisions and working together as three entities. So my plea for the support is if, if Essex is looking at an override based on what we decide for this budget that sounds like we're all in favor of, help us help you. Come to the table with literally anything other than the entire new growth of the school budget and singling it out. We want to help this. It's, it's, we want to help the whole big picture. And I'm really heartened by seeing so many people, uh, making public comments who are taking the time and energy to understand and learn and go to those meetings to understand our town's finances as well, because it does. It's a huge piece of the work we do. But in the end, we don't determine whether or not they have it. We just work within the strengths based on the information that we're provided. So now that we do have a more public-facing, transparent way of working through that, I think there is hope for future, uh, problem solving that can. I, I actually am hopeful about this for the first time in a while.
Anyone else? Or are we ready to vote?
I just want to say that I am mindful of the increased costs to Essex residents. I am an Essex resident. I know we had one speak earlier who said that she has seen her tax bill go up significantly, um, in the last however many years. I can say that my family personally has not experienced that and, um, obviously that's going to look different for every single person in the town of Essex. If you are living in a modest home and you are not making improvements on it, it's likely that your tax, your piece of the tax buy has not grown as much as your neighbors. So when we look at statistics and we say, okay, the $577 dollars is going to be the average annual increase to the tax bill. That's $48 a month on average. But that includes 10 to 20 million dollar properties, which disproportionately represents those large amounts. I feel like a median, thank you, Mr. Schlegel, would be a more appropriate data point to use, um, to represent the cost to, um, residents. Because I think that it would look much more reasonable. Um, we can do this. I hope that our town leaders will, um, be mindful of the narrative that we all contribute to as this goes to a vote, because I, I really feel as though if this were not to pass in the town of Essex, we are, we will be in a desperate situation. Especially if there is a plan to have a new Essex elementary voted on next year.
All right. Anyone else? While we vote? All right. So.
You're two-thirds, right?
Yep. So how am I wording this exactly? So all those in favor? Let's see now. Thank you, everyone.
Did you also need to do the capital budget? Obviously been focusing completely on our operating budget. Um, our capital budget is comprised of just our debt borrowings and, um, we did have one page in the initial budget book. It has actually gone down $5,000. But so the, um, revised number to the towns, which I will also get up to them tonight, is on Chris's sheet there of the three, 3,963,063 dollars.
All right. So I'll make a motion to approve Manchester Essex Regional School District capital budget for fiscal year 2026 in the amount of 3,963,063 dollars. So I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or concerns? All right. All those in favor? So I'll see you in a minute. Just thank you. What else? Do we need to cover any calls tonight?
Do two follow-ups based on some questions and statements made during deliberation.
Sure.
This feels good to have you here. Now we know what we can going forward.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
My intent is to bring on April 1st a full reduction list, so put some specifics to that. I feel like we have to. Okay, well, good times. And I don't want to take it lightly because it's going to have a significant impact. There's going to be conversations to be had here in district with people who may be impacted. But I think all the commentary you provided made it very clear that this is one step in a multi-step process to fix the structural deficit. But there's no, we have no guarantees yet because of what we believe to be the path forward for passing this budget. Um, so we talked a little bit yesterday that, um, the budgets will need to pass at town meeting and then depending on how they're structured, we'll need to go to the ballot vote. So we'll have no clarity on whether or not we have a passed budget until May 13. At this point, potentially May 21st if Manchester changes course and puts something out to ballot. So based on a couple of the things that were brought up here, my, I, I think people need to be aware of what's at stake. I don't think we can wait till May and after the fact to create the list. So on April 1st, I will take what is now a very high-level list and try to bring you as completely detailed list as possible. And then to the school choice question, I think at the 520 meeting, we'll know where our budget is and we'll be able to revisit school choice. If we have a completed budget at that point, I think we could very easily say, hey, we're ready to go forward and then talk about reserves. We could revisit at that point something. The facilities manager, we are making other cuts. That could be a, it was a hundred thousand dollar savings. It could be a one-for-one. But it sounds like, and I think we need to be really clear that the intent of, of the committee is that should we go forward with school choice at a later date, that those resources are coming back into either our reserves or for, to support something in our district. I, I don't think, I think we just want to be clear upfront so that doesn't become a point later on. So April 1st, a more detailed reduction list that will give people an opportunity to come on April 15th. I'm assuming there'll be some feedback on that. And then 520 to revisit school choice and assess our next, our next steps. Hopefully it's just, that's it. Let's find a place for the kids and move forward, but if not, we'll be talking about what the next steps and the strategy would be.
So question, procedurally, since we do have a request from our towns, knowing that there could potentially be additional healthcare savings, the request is, should that happen, that it go toward the assessment? Is it worth us? We've, we've been through this nonstop. Is it worth us taking a vote on that to, uh, give our assurances to town partners either way so that they can plan? So that there's, there's no surprise if it comes up? And then the second question is, is it of value to do the same for school choice? So that they're not planning for that? I feel like it's at this late in the game, it's nice to give them as certain information as possible.
If you take a blanket vote to say future healthcare savings are intended to reduce the overall budget and, um, committee reserves the decision-making on how to utilize additional school choice, should we take it?
I'd like to make that motion.
What, what was the second part about?
Um, school committee reserves.
That, that.
The school committee reserves, no, reserves decision-making authority over additional school choice.
Oh, no.
No, yeah, no, I think, I think Teresa's asking, should we make a commitment now?
Yeah, so I, I, the, if the, if, if we're, are you open, Mr. Chairman, to me making the motion at this time? For this purpose? Then I would make a motion that the school committee commit to additional healthcare savings being for this fiscal year, its budget, being used to offset the assessment to the towns.
I would reduce, reduce the overall budget.
Reduce the overall budget. Thank you. Reduce the overall budget. And that the school committee is committed to separate motions. That's one motion. That's all I'm.
Second.
This is just the healthcare piece of it. Yeah.
So I have a question. What is the, uh, benefit of this again and what's the negative in your mind?
My, the benefit to me is to be very clear. Last year we ran into this where there was late breaking news and, and there may not be any. But just to be clear to our town partners and for ourselves, that if that is the case, that those savings will be used. We don't have to deliberate, wait till another meeting, deliberate and decide where to use that.
They will be used to offset the motion or to reduce the overall.
If we get another point off, we'll take it down another 60,000.
As opposed to last year when we, when we used it to, that money to bring back, to bring back the librarian.
I understand, but, uh, in the same way, wouldn't that then make the hill even steeper next year?
Yeah.
I'm not sure if it would or wouldn't, but it's a, in my mind, it is a reasonable ask, knowing that healthcare is a cost that's so, that's been pretty volatile. That, and, and a minimal amount of change likely to take place that I'm comfortable with. Which is why I make a motion.
But to your point, that is why I would prefer it be bundled with the caveat that any additional revenue from school choice students goes back into our reserves.
But if we say back into our reserves, then we are limiting ourselves. We could choose to use it to bring back one of those positions. So I think the point there was that we keep.
Well, so it, it, so any additional thing, additional school choice revenue is for use within the district, yes.
The school committee reserves the right to determine
reinvest.
Where the additional school choice revenue is used.
Right.
How it's used.
And I think that that's stubbornly reasonable considering that the town of Essex has asked us not to, um, take any additional school choice students, so we shouldn't be depending on that revenue.
All right. So the motion on the table is healthcare, any potential healthcare savings right now, or that we might see. Any more questions? All right. All those in favor? Those against? Do you have stance? All right. The second motion?
You want to make it?
I move that any additional revenue in fiscal year 26, fiscal year 26, any additional revenue generated from school choice students, um, will the school committee reserves. Pam, help me out here.
The decision-making authority.
To appropriate them, yeah, the use of those funds.
Yeah, I had it before.
How additional school choice funds are used.
Anyways, and then.
Into the school choice.
It comes into the fund. So does it go as an general offset to the budget and then you can talk about bringing back the facilities manager role, or does it go into the budget and then get transferred to your reserve account?
Or does it just reduce the budget?
Basically, all I'm saying is that it's second, not going to reduce the budget. I mean, you know, we get shorted on any of our federal funding, it could go to, uh, offset, you know, title, lost Title I funds or lost IDA funds. Don't know that that will happen. You have to be prepared for anything to happen.
Okay. So do we want to make a motion first and then? All right. Well, you said, I wasn't sure. So, uh, discussion, go ahead.
So if our point here is to send a clear signal to ourselves and towns what our intent is, this is the opposite of that. Because it just says we, we could do whatever we want.
No, it says that, uh, it says that the health insurance is going to come, is going to decrease our budget. So.
We've already voted, we've already voted on that. We're not talking about additional revenue such as school choice.
So we are, so we are saying that the towns cannot count on any additional revenue from school choice to, to, to decrease the overall budget.
I don't think that was the actual motion. The actual motion was that we. I, I know, but I think the language that you adopted from Pam was that we reserve the right for the school committee to decide. And I guess to Jake's point, that means we could decide to use it to offset the budget. We could also decide to use it to reinstate a position. We could, so I'm, I'm in favor of that. I'm just not sure it actually lends any clarity.
Well, I think that the, so my intent behind it, Jake, to your, to your point is to communicate that yes, while the expectation is that if the health, health share, healthcare.
Not health, not healthcare, it's school choice.
No, that if the healthcare comes in lower, that yes, they can count on that
Which we've stated, yeah.
To the towns. But if we also end up taking school choice students, no, they cannot count on that. That's the distinction that I'm trying to make because in the past, last year, we were criticized because we didn't make it clear in advance that it would not be taken off the top.
So I'll just, I'll just say my preference, which is that we actually state that it goes to reserves. We are committing a significant amount of reserves this year. It's to do everything we can to build that up. It would help the towns next year because we'll ask for less than. To me, it doesn't make sense to leave it this long. It makes sense to say, hey, we got a reserves problem. Anything we do with school choice would be too much with that.
You just keep unmuting. I agree, Jake.
So can I, can I, can I amend it then? Or would you like to rescind it and we'll redo it or how would you mean it?
Well, I'd like to comment on it before we do because, um, with you that I want to clarify it, but I also think that if that if we do get to that point, uh, that there will be conversation to be had between you know, for other uses from reductions that were part of this budget, like the facility manager position versus our reserves. So I, I, I would like us to be able to have that flexibility. So I don't really know how to word that.
That's, that's the way it's worded currently.
Well, we could, we could word it differently. If what, if your intent is that we need to restate the town of Essex, that we will not be using that to reduce the budget and therefore they cannot count on it reducing the assessment. If that's the intent, I think you can say it that way.
That's my intent.
Having that made this motion, I'm just predicting that that would be a different way to say it.
That's my intent primarily, that it, that it be reinvested somehow, whether it's going straight to our reserves or utilized in another way, but not to offset, reduce the overall budget.
I agree with you, Jake. Ideally, I want it going back into reserves also, knowing that we're in a position where federal funding could disappear. federal funding could disappear. I think that we want some flexibility.
And the reality is, if it goes in reserves, we can do whatever we want with reserves. It's kind of semantic argument anyway, but.
Transfer it to reserves.
Yeah, it's going to be.
It would be an amendment of the budget to use less E and D. Basically, but it wouldn't change the bottom line to the towns.
School choice has to flow into school choice receiving, so.
So it would be very indirect to reserve, but you can do it.
All right, well, I'll I'll say I'm comfortable passing it the way it is, giving the sense here that we have enough people who are in support of going to reserves anyway. We kind of accomplish the same thing, so let's just go forward.
The motion was that additional revenue generated by FY twenty six school choice, the school committee would retain, would reserve the right to determine how those additional school choice funds were spent.
It is, but but I'm I'm feeling.
Do a quick amendment, though.
I think it's fine the way it is. Let's give it a ride. If we need to amend it, we amend it. Let's give it a try.
I don't know. I feel like we're at the, let's just do it right. But I make a motion to amend the motion to clarify, so that we can clarify this, to amend the motion to say that.
What? It's going to be that time.
That the.
Just say it how you want it done from here.
That the school committee will not use additional school choice revenues coming in this year to reduce the overall budget. But now you I need some language. You guys, you hear what the intent is, what language would you?
And I'm hearing what everybody wants.
Yeah.
And what you want right now may not be what you want or need on May twentieth.
Okay.
Because there may be a good reason to just lower the budget, which if you're in reconc, revision. You may need to shave something off your cut list if you're in revision. So I would leave, just leave this committee with the authority to determine if you are taking any school choice dollars in, that you you as a group make a vote on where they go.
But we don't need a, we don't need a motion at all to do that.
Well, I can rescind my amendment because in doing that.
And and I really don't. This was on the heels of you wanted to be very clear that you, all future health call, healthcare savings would go to reduce the bottom line. If you want to avoid a debate over whether or not there was an intent around school choice dollars, you could go back to, it won't go. I'll let you go. I think it doesn't, just be clear that you are going to determine school choice revenue placement when and if you decide it's coming in as a body, makes it clear that this body is going to make the decision. If people want to lobby you for reducing the budget, that's great. If you want to lobby you for a position return, that's great, and you can take it up at that time. But you're clarifying the the intent is not just direct reduction.
Then I can, I can.
And and if you take no vote, take no vote. Cross that bridge again.
No, I can support that. I like that clear message.
I can't make a motion.
There's still a motion. Yeah, there's still a motion.
Is there a second? Second. All those in favor of moving to motion? All those not in favor? So just for clarity, can we repeat where we're at?
So how about the school committee? It reserves the right to determine how additional FY twenty six school, school choice funds are used.
All those in favor of that motion? All those? Standing. We will move on to any closing statements from the school.
So I just want to echo Pam's comment about the PD day and kudos for the PD day. Mr. Gillsbury did a great job facilitating the student panel and trying to elicit kind of how teachers impact them in a personal way, which is great. And then there was quite a variety of sessions that teachers appeared quite engaged in, so thank you for that. I also want to acknowledge, we haven't done it as a school committee yet. I want to make a personal reflection regarding Ken Warnock. I first started working with him on the Essex Elementary Playground. And I always appreciated his kind of level headedness, calmness, you know, let's think this through kind of bit. But more importantly, his kind of commitment to both towns and thinking of us as a system, right? Not as individual towns, but we are a district, so I always appreciated that of him.
And I'll just close with one thing as well. And I know this has been a very challenging budget season, so thank you all for all of the effort and time that we put into this. I know that I personally appreciate it and we'll go forward from here. All right, and with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Samantha, thank you.